It's been great.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the City Council Study Session of Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. Two items on the agenda. The first of these is presentation from Red Rock Behavioral Health Services regarding the new Red Rock Crisis Center. We have Ms. Verna Faust with us to explain that to us. Would you please?
Thank you. Would you prefer I sit at the table or be up front? What would be?
You're fine. What we're trying to do is make sure that you can be heard inside those little boxes.
The microphones are on the table.
All right. I'll just sit here. So, thank you for having us here today to talk about Red Rock Behavioral Health Services and what we do. It's one of my favorite things to talk about. We are going to talk about the crisis unit, but we're a lot more than a crisis unit. And so, I want to tell you a little bit about Red Rock and about the services that we are going to provide for Cleveland and McLean County. So, I am Verna Faust. I'm the CEO. I have been, this is my 35th year in community mental health, so I've been doing this for a long time. I've been with Red Rock 26 years. And I'm going to introduce the rest of our executive team that's also going to be visiting with you tonight. We have Dr. Juana Ellison, who is the Chief Operating Officer for outpatient programs, Steve Norwood, Chief Operating Officer for specialized programs, Kyle Kikekendall, who's our Chief Financial Officer, and this is Delia Vargas, who's the Norman Regional Program Director. So, Delia is here in the Norman outpatient offices, running the show, and we're getting busier and busier every day. So, just a little bit about Red Rock. We were founded in 1974 under President Kennedy's Community Mental Health Act. We're a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit organization. We're certified by the Department of Mental Health as a community mental health center. We're also nationally recognized and certified by the Department of Mental Health as a certified community behavioral health clinic. Dr. Ellison's going to tell you a little bit more about what that means. We're also nationally accredited by CARF, which is an agency similar to JCAHO. We were actually the first in Oklahoma, the first CMHC to be accredited. So, the CCBHC started in 2017 under a congressional act to change the way mental health services are provided across the nation. And there is a difference, and she's going to talk to you about that. Real quickly, we are deeply committed to our values at Red Rock, which are ethics and integrity, clinical excellence, positive work culture, innovative, financial strength, and community services. Red Rock has a long history of being a very innovative organization and also for starting many, many new initiatives and programs. We have a long history on our website. I'm sure nobody's interested in reading all that, but if you have any interest, it is on there. This is a map of the CCBHCs in Oklahoma. So, the Department of Mental Health designates each area of the state as that CCBHC's catchment area. And there's a lot of implications to that, but the main thing to know is that where your catchment area is, you're responsible for that area, and you're also responsible for making sure anyone that needs, adult or child, that needs mental health services, that does not have a payer source, that that is provided. And that's largely what we do. And so, all of the orange that you see on there, mainly across western Oklahoma, and then Lincoln and Potawatomi Counties, that is our catchment area, part of Oklahoma County as well. And then, new to us is Cleveland and McLean County, and we share this catchment area with central Oklahoma Community Mental Health. This next map is a map of our different locations. As you can see, we have lots of locations across the state. Where you see the yellow markers, those are either urgent recovery centers, crisis units, or both. And then, in Comanche County, we have a special partnership down there with the Cohen Veterans Network, and we provide specialty services. We have a clinic in Lawton, one in Oklahoma City, and one in Colorado Springs. This page is just another list of our services, and I have some brochures that has some information that I'll pass out, and also have some swag if you want to tell me where to leave that at the end. But I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Ellison, let her talk to you about CCBHC.
Okay. Thank you. So, I really wanted to just point out, I'll spend the majority of my time on this, talking about the key services that we offer in the CCBHC. So, kind of starting at the top, the whole 24/7 mobile response, that's kind of at the heart of the CCBHC model. That means we respond to people around the clock in crisis, and it's so important to be that lifeline when people are in those crises. The quick access to screening, that's another thing. We've really worked hard to streamline this process, so it's not difficult. We've removed as many barriers as we can to get people into services when they need it. Outpatient and primary care screening, I'll go over that in just a second. Then we have, of course, we have just traditional outpatient mental health, individual therapy, group therapy. The patient-centered treatment planning, that's another thing central to the CCBHC philosophy, is it's patient-driven, it's patient-centered. Who do they want involved in their treatment? And so, we really do take a lot of pride in how we get people on board with us and that personalized approach, which is so important to people. The peer recovery, that's a very important service that we offer. The targeted case management on social determinants, and I'll share a little bit more about social determinants as well in just a second. And then, of course, the focused care for veterans. We have really seen a wonderful service out there just for these military people that truly deserve it, so. And the psych rehab services. So, real quick, let me talk about the primary care screening. That's a big part of what we do in the CCBHC. So, we really want to connect people with the PCP if they don't have their primary care. We also want to follow and monitor blood pressure and BMI, and if a person's diagnosed with schizophrenia, if we're prescribing them antipsychotics, we really want to check on those screenings all the time, the diabetes screening, and of course, the tobacco and alcohol screening. So, there's a lot of screenings, just health risk, that people walk around with, that we have really implemented into the CCBHC services.
And one thing I might say, one of the reasons that Congress enacted this CCBHC Act is because of the research that says people with a serious mental illness or substance abuse disorder die, on average, 25 years younger than the rest of the population, mainly from preventable physical conditions. And so, and it's about 30 years in Oklahoma, actually. So, by doing this, we help save a lot of lives.
Right. Absolutely. And just getting those preventive things done, the screenings, and making sure that people are going for those preventive measures. Also, just to point out, kind of this comprehensive array of services, I really wanted to mention as well, just outside of our traditional stuff, Steve has the HIV prevention education services underneath him, as well as a PAC program. And then, we also have MAT clinics, which are for people who struggle with opiate addiction. We have those in our outpatient offices as well. So, this is just, this next chart just kind of shows you a breakdown. Seventy-nine percent of the adults that we see at Red Rock have a serious mental illness, and 73% of the children that we see have a serious emotional disorder. So, we're really needed. We know that much. The next one just kind of shows the increase of clients. Year after year, we see there's more of a need for our services out there, so it continues to climb. And this is just a nice breakdown of the demographics. It's kind of small. I guess you can see it okay. Kind of a breakdown of demographics. That didn't work very well. Okay, the continuum of care is just another nice way to show kind of all the levels of care we offer at Red Rock. This last one's really kind of getting into the social determinants that I wanted to talk about. As you can see, this one on the left here, it shows that 40%, which is the majority of problems, are kind of driven by those socioeconomic factors. So, we proposed and we awarded a million dollar over the next, a million each year over the next four years grant from SAMSA to do the social determinants, and we've appropriately named it Equal Ops, which is out there tackling the social divide. So, our goal is to each quarter have, whether it's food insecurities, or jobs, or whatever, and we want a team of folks that will just go out there into the community and really help educate, give coupons, talk about eating healthy, find ways that we can help those community members how to address some of these social determinants that we know are a huge, put them at a huge risk for their health. So, that's my part. I'll turn it.
Yeah, I'll just mention a couple of things. So, as part of the grant, one of the things we are going to have is this van that you see. This is kind of a mock-up. We hope to get that soon. We're having that specially made. So, that van will be, you'll see it going around Norman, working with people, helping. And just to give you an idea, if you don't know about social determinants of health, it's making sure people have a place to live, make sure that they have the food to eat, just the basics they need in life, because if they don't have that, they're not going to think about their mental health, so. All right. Kyle?
Yeah, I'm just going to give just a very brief overview, the financial overview of Red Rock. So, as we saw a minute ago, we've served about 18,000 clients last year. Red Rock has a budget of $77 million. Our primary funding comes through Medicaid, Department of Mental Health, and we do commercials as well. But we don't deny anybody services, so if they're unable to make a payment, we don't let that prevent them from getting services. Everybody can get services. We did have close to about $100 million in assets last year. We have no long-term debts. We're in a really strong financial position at Red Rock, so we're pretty proud of that. We've got 930 employees. I think when I came on Red Rock about a little over 10 years ago, we had about 250 employees, so we've really grown over the last 10 years. And that's pretty much something we have the financial overview.
Hi, I'm Steve Norwood, and I'm with our crisis services, our 24-hour services. I just want to tell you a little bit about what we've done in Norman, so you'll have an idea kind of about Red Rock. In 2006, Griffin was running about 200 censuses per day, and they had 150 beds. So, they were way over capacity and sleeping on the floor. And so, in November of 2006, the department approached Red Rock, and we opened a crisis unit, 26 beds, on the grounds of Griffin to help slow down the admissions that were going into Griffin. Since we started in November, the eight months of that fiscal year, remaining fiscal year, we saw 841 clients, and only 22% went further to Griffin for long-term treatment. Then, in the next couple of years, we saw another 3,000 consumers in those 26 beds, and the department approached us again and asked us to open another unit, which took our capacity to 56 beds. And it lowered Griffin's capacity, bed capacity, to 120, and they were able to maintain that capacity and that census. Since opening the Norman crisis unit, which was 17 and a half years ago, we've served approximately 40,000 consumers, and about 40% of those come from Cleveland County. So, about 16,000. Because we're centrally located in the state, we serve a lot, and I know in one year, we had 54 out of 77 counties coming to us here in Norman. So, you know, widespread. But in February 2020, we opened a state-of-the-art crisis unit in outpatient office in Weatherford, Oklahoma, had 16 beds. And then, last August, we opened a new crisis unit in urgent care chairs, 12 chairs, 10 beds, in Shawnee, Oklahoma. That was open last August. Both of these were to try to help, this is a weather facility here, both of these were to try to help take some of the load off of Norman and also give local centers to local communities. So, we did that. Today, we operate 40 crisis beds on the grounds of Griffin. We have 40 beds, and we have four urgent recovery chairs. Crisis stabilization provides a safe and therapeutic environment where individuals can receive intensive crisis stabilization with a length of stay of about five to seven days, and most often prevent longer hospitalizations. With Griffin closing in the next few years, Red Rock is in the process of looking for land to purchase and build a crisis unit and urgent recovery center. With the new center, we will increase our urgent care chairs to 16, and we are getting close to seeing that property and working on that very heavily, so we can get that process started, because we will be building a new facility. Just to let you know, Red Rock also opened an outpatient clinic at Porter Medical Building. They're right across from Norman Regional Hospital. We opened that in November of 2017, and that today is where we're expanding that location to provide outpatient services in Norman. So, and we're also looking at additional office space in Moore, Oklahoma, because Cleveland County has South Oklahoma City and Moore as well, heavy population there. Today, Red Rock has 120 employees in Norman, and we expect that to grow to 150 by the end of the year, and we expect that to continue to grow. So, if you have any questions, that's, because this is the Weatherford facility that we built, and then there's also kind of a rendering from our architect, maybe what Norman would look like, kind of give you an ideal. Of course, you know, once we secure a property, then we'll have to design it for the property.
So, just a couple of things. So, the Norman outpatient was not opened in 2017. That was actually opened about a year.
2021.
Twenty twenty, yeah, about a year ago. But at that time, we were not a CCBHC, so we were just offering traditional outpatient services, and now we're offering the full array of CCBHC. The other thing to tell you is the crisis unit in Norman, when it's built, it will not be for the entire state. It will be just for Norman. So, that will make a significant difference.
Okay. Million-dollar question. Where are you looking for land? Are you looking for land actively?
We are actually working with the county on a piece of land that they have, and we, it's not a done deal yet. We sure hoped it would be a lot quicker than what we've got there, but we're hoping to get that wrapped up pretty soon.
Is it in Norman, or is it?
Yes.
Okay. I have some other thoughts. Are you interested in co-locating a sobering center in the area, or?
Well, so sobering centers are not something we provide anywhere, and it's not a part of the CCBHC, so it's not a service that we provide. The land we're looking at would not have any other space except for us, and we're just hoping we'll fairly fit there. But we certainly want to be a good community partner. We would run a sobering center, but we certainly would work as a good partner to try to help get those people that need services into services and so forth.
Okay. That's all I have, though.
Who would run, if you had a partner or a group of people, if you could describe them, who would run a sobering center?
Well, that's done lots of different ways in different cities, and I'm far from an expert on that, so I'm not sure that I could tell you. I know, I just don't know. I'll be honest with you. I don't know.
Well, just expressing a thought that many of us have had here on council. We need a facility like that, but we don't know how to describe the elephant, basically. And so, it's coming around with that idea. We could use some help with?
Yeah, like I said, we'd be happy to be a good community partner and help in any way we can. We don't have any experience running a sobering center, and that's not really part of what we provide.
Councilmember Ball?
Yes, on that same note, I think one of the examples we looked at in Tulsa, it's just their sobering center is connected to a 24/7 healthcare, similar to Red Rock. That healthcare center doesn't run the sobering center. It's just part of the connectivity right there if they have.
And I kind of know that history. 1212, which was not a community mental health center, but a substance abuse facility. I know that they were involved in running that sobering center, and then I know Grand Lake took them over, and so, that's kind of how that happened. I do know that history. But I don't know of any other CCBHC in Oklahoma that is operating a sobering center.
Okay. Could be a thing where they're just in close proximity to each other, but, so do I understand that the current Red Rock facilities at Griffin Hospital campus?
Correct.
They're not adding, they're not adding a new place, you're replacing that entirely? You'll be moving off that site completely?
Correct. And it's, that facility is in very poor conditions, and we've been leasing that from the state for 17 years. We are very ready to get out of that space and have something newer and nicer.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Councilmember Ball.
Your Equal Ops stand, would this be a resource the city could use? Recently, we had to go on a private property and remove a transient camp. So, if our law enforcement, I mean, would this be a resource that our law enforcement could call you guys and say, we're going to this, we're going to this area to talk to, you know, most of our homeless individuals suffer from mental illness.
Oh, yeah, sure.
So, we could always call you guys, and that would be a resource that we could take out with us and maybe even before to start talking to these individuals.
Sure, yeah. I mean, the whole idea, and again, it's a federal grant, and so, and how we proposed it is it's the social determinants. That's what's really causing so many problems.
Absolutely.
And so, the whole idea to get a team of resource clinicians on board to go out and teach, you know, educate on food and jobs and all those things.
Could you guys even provide training for some of our local organizations that handle?
I think we would definitely be up to, however we can partner with you all. And you know, we work a lot with the homeless right now. We don't operate a homeless shelter, but we work hand-in-hand with the homeless shelters. We, of course, see a lot of people from homeless shelters. We do have activities around helping the homeless, certainly going out to a transient place like that and talking to people about, can we get you into services? How can we help you get housing? How can we help you get the food, you know, that you need? So, that is a service that we provide, is trying to get people off the street into a situation that's better. But we all know, not everybody wants off the street, but we, that is something we do work at.
And lastly, this might be a question for you, Steve. When it comes to crisis management, probably 90%, if not more, is driven through the police department, because they are the ones that normally respond to somebody in crisis. And can you just kind of describe how you work with local law enforcement to get people to the help they need?
Well, we have a really great relationship with the Norman Police and the Moore Police, and they're able to drop someone off. If we feel like they're not appropriate, they'll come back. We worked a lot with Kerry Bryant, who's now at the Sheriff's Office, quite first-name basis, and work with him quite a bit, so, yes. And about 80% do come in what we call a nursery detention status, which is usually by law enforcement.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Grant?
I'm kind of curious, do you all work with like harm reduction services?
We do. We have, you know, and we're just getting established in Norman, so there's some services that aren't here yet that we hope to bring. But, for example, we work with, in partnership with the Department of Mental Health, to have the lock zone vending machines. We have those in several locations. You know, as far as harm reduction, people have different definitions of that. I mean, we don't do needle exchange programs or anything. Actually, our federal dollars will not allow us to do that. But we do education, prevention. Is there anything else specific that you had in mind?
I guess it sounds like you would be partnering with something like Shred the Stigma if you wanted to cover things that weren't covered by your grant.
I'm sorry, partnering with who?
Shred the Stigma. They're the ones that do, they have to report to the state, like the number of needles they're taking in.
I see.
And also, I've heard about outbreaks of like Hep C and how doing that has like lowered that in the population, but not just homeless people, but people on the threshold and, I guess it'd be like thinking of somebody who's spreading it in multiple communities.
Right. So, in the Oklahoma City area, we actually, and correct me if I say anything wrong, Steve, we have a contract with the Department of Health, sorry, Department of Health to do Hep C testing. And it would be great if somehow we could, I don't know, work with the health department here to maybe set up something similar to that. And it's a very successful, we do HIV and hep testing. Am I missing anything, Steve?
We do syphilis testing.
And syphilis testing in Oklahoma City.
And then, with the county, how is your partnership with them? Like, you've been here 17 years. Have you worked with them fairly well?
Well, I mean, one thing I think to kind of remember is, we've had the crisis unit here, and central Oklahoma has been the CCBHC. So, that's kind of been their area, not that we don't want to partner, but that's been their area, is the CCBHC, to work with all the partners in the community. Now, we will be sharing a catchment area with central Oklahoma. Now, we will be sharing a catchment area with Central Oklahoma, and we will be more involved in the community and partnerships. I'm not going to say that we know every partnership there is. I think it's going to have to be a two-way street with us talking. Delia, how long have you lived in Norman?
I have lived in Norman ever since I came to Oklahoma, so about 12 years.
So she's right here, and she, she knows a lot more, but certainly we want to, we want to partner with the organizations that it makes sense for us to do. And that's a big part of what we do, is we, we're working with the community. As part of the CCBHC, we do a needs assessment to determine what the needs are, and we try to, you know, tailor our services to what the needs of the communities are. And they're very, very different across Oklahoma, what the needs are.
And just thinking about our transient populations, not necessarily homelessness, but thinking about SEC readiness and having all these people from different areas of the country coming to visit us on what are going to be big, big party weekends or weeks, because some people stay for a couple of weeks as they're traveling around. And so I'm kind of curious about like mental health upsets there. And then, was it, I forgot who presented URCs to us last year.
It was probably Lighthouse. Oh, oh, okay, I know what you're talking about. Yes, yes.
But I had brought up with them the fact that OU has had some incidents with either radicalized students that had a bomb set off and blew themselves up unfortunately, but had displayed like troubling mental health signs before that with their tweets. And then a fraternity member who shot at his fraternity before he committed suicide, who also had a troubling display of behavior. So I was just curious, have you worked with that population before and know about that history?
We work with that type of population, specific to everything that goes on at OU. I can't say we're up to that, but I, up to speed on that. But I will tell you, we didn't mention, as part of the SAMSA grant, one of the target populations in there is OU, the OU students. And so we're still in the process of, of trying to find the partners that we need to work on that. This, the SAMSA grant just started in October, it's a four-year grant. So over the next few years, that's something we're going to be working with as part of our grant, and, and then it will happen after the grant. So if that's an area that you know really well, it would be great for us to visit with you to see what is the best way to get, get that off the ground.
Good. Thank you.
Councilor.
To that, I have a couple of questions, but to that point, the, the group that is working on OU's campus is the Behavioral Intervention Team, they call it BIT. So they're the ones that are identifying, you know, students that may be in crisis for lots of different ways. So those would be the individuals. So it, it's made up of like housing and student affairs and the OUPD and various kind of people within the, within the OU community. But I was wondering, what is the timeline for the Equal Ops van right now to be in service?
The last time I visited with our, it's called Van Do It, it's this wonderful place in Missouri, that they just trick these vans out, it's really quite amazing. We went to their factory and saw it in action. There was a couple of recalls on the particular van, and so they're getting that all ready. And so we hope within a few months to have that, but I'm really relying heavily on them to get it to us.
We understand about procurement and, you know, the delays and, you know, all those kinds of things. So, yeah, so just, basically just waiting on the van, and then once you have, you receive it, then you'll get kind of it in service.
So Delia's busy working on hiring the staff, and so the staff will be ready to be deployed as soon as we have a vehicle.
Yeah, that's exactly what I've been prioritizing. And so my goal is to get out in the community more as that settles down a little bit and be able to talk to some of the community partners. But yeah, right now, we're just focused on trying to set up all of the staff and get them ready to go.
What kind of staff would be on the van?
So we'd have case managers, peer recovery, support specialist. They always have access to a 24/7 therapist who we have in our virtual teams, just in case that's needed. We also have AP Reons that are on call 24 hours a day, so there's additional levels, if, if needed, that, that we could definitely access through tele.
So, and the way that it would work, I'm asking, but kind of thinking about what I would think. So when we think about like mobile response, I'm assuming that it'll have kind of twofold operations where like you'll go out, where there are populations that are identified that you needed to, to connect with and target, but then it also might be deployed if there is someone in crisis in that moment, depending on the need.
Those are great questions, and you're exactly right, there's two different things. We will have another van from Van Do It that is our mobile crisis response. So those are the people that jump on that to go out into the communities and address the crisis going on.
So separate?
Separate. The Equal Ops is just, it's loud, and it's the green with the tackling, the social divide. It's really loud on purpose.
Okay.
Because that's our resource van, and that's where we go out in the community and really help with those social determinants. And that's through a federal grant that says, this is what we can do with it.
Perfect.
So I might just mention, you know, crisis, crisis, lots of different ways. If somebody calls our crisis line, we can send a link to their phone. They can hit that link and immediately be with someone and have access to a licensed mental health professional. They can walk in, we can go out, and there's virtually anything.
Because we, we've heard a lot about, you know, 988 and the way that they're deploying iPads with like our law enforcement agencies and various things. So it's nice to see that they wouldn't necessarily have to have, you know, that iPad that has been deployed through 988, but that you can send them something to get on, you know.
Yeah, their own phone.
Their own phone.
Doxy, it's just that simple.
That's amazing.
And we work with a lot of law enforcement agencies with iPads.
Yeah. And then there's a last slide that has a map with like a line on it. Is it, is that a map that's delineating kind of your coverage area?
I was gonna, I actually was gonna show that if somebody brought it up, so.
We have the slide, so.
The Department of Mental Health determines what those catchment lines are, okay? So what this is showing, you can see it, it's the, the county starts at southwest 89th, and that line goes right through the middle. On the left side of that is Red Rock Behavioral Health, and on the right is Central Oklahoma. I will tell you, that does not mean that people that live on Central Oklahoma or Red Rock side could not go to the other one. We can see anybody in the county. The catchment area means we cannot have a facility in someone else's catchment area.
That's a really good distinction, because I was thinking like, they've bifurcated Norman. I mean, there's, we've got a lot of people, and that could get really confusing if they weren't able to go.
They can go to either one.
Okay, so your facility will be on basically the western side of Norman?
Yes, yes.
In the C O C M H area. The current facility's in that other area.
On Porter? Is that what you're talking about? Oh, you're talking about the Griffin campus, you're right. It is on the Griffin campus, yes.
Porter is a bit of a body line there, right?
Yeah, so that, we would have, we would have to have the facility in our catchment area, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council? Thank you much, very informative.
Sure. Happy to do it. And real quick, one thing that makes the CCBHC so successful is really partnering with communities out there and, and just really bringing our heads together. So I'm going to leave a few cards. If anybody would like to email me about any kind of MOUs or anything that we can do, please don't hesitate. And this is jam-packed with swag.
What did, what did you say the, what did you say the timeline was pending property acquisition?
On the crisis unit?
Yeah.
Well.
On relocating your whole thing, I guess.
Right, well, for right now, outpatient's going to stay on North Porter. We thought about relocating it, we have not come up with a better place, so we're expanding in that building. The crisis unit, you know, you know, if you've been building projects, it never goes as fast as you want to, but we, we gotta have, we need to have that built for sure by the time, before Griffin leaves. And so as soon as we can get that land secured, we're, we've already got preliminary plans. So how long will it take to build? Longer than we wish it would, I can tell you that, but I don't know.
But you're ready to go, as soon as you have a place to do it, you're ready to move forward.
We're, we're ready to move forward with finishing the plans. We can't finish the plans till we know, you know, what the land we have is. And then we're going to work it just as fast as we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much. Thank you.
All right. Good stuff.
Item number two on the agenda is discussion regarding the water reuse pilot program. Well, I was starting to feel lonely, because I couldn't see any of the faces that I wanted. I ain't doing it. Right. Okay. Nathan, is this a separate, oh, yeah, separate file here. It's on the desktop.
All right, there we go. All right, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. What we're wanting to do is the reused project, we've been working on it for quite some time, and we've been keeping a good conversation with DEQ along the way. So we were kind of waiting for this letter that we received yesterday that kind of solidified that, that relationship that we've had with them all this time, because we kind of want to start presenting our report to everyone and, and show that they're aware also, they're on board, or, you know, they didn't approve it, but they're on board, they understand the concept. And so, yeah, we actually received that yesterday, and, but what we're wanting to do is just present to you kind of our findings so far, give you an update. It's not final. We have a group that's going to, a national water research institute that's going to review this and see if we did our due diligence as how we did the pilot. So then when we go to tell everyone it's, it was successful, did we, you know, dot all the i's and cross the t's. So we're still waiting for a little bit before we finalize our report. And then all this drives the costs, which is timely, because Garver, Cole's with Garver, and they're also updating our water master plan and our sewer master plan. And the cost and this concept is going to play perfect timing on where's our next big pieces of water coming from. And so with that, I'm going to just really turn it over to Cole and let him give an update of how we're doing.
All right, thanks, Chris, and good evening, council. Again, my name's Cole Niblet, I lead our Oklahoma Water Team for Garver. Been blessed to work with the city of Norman for the past eight years or so, since I've been with the firm, so excited to be with you tonight. I also have on the line Dr. Mike Watts, one of our partners in the firm who was instrumental in this project. If we dive off into the technical weeds, he is our true subject matter expert that, that we can rely on here. So, Mike, can you hear us all right before we get going here? And we'll make sure we can hear you.
I can hear you loud and clear.
Excellent, all right, fantastic. Okay, so in, in the talk tonight, like Chris mentioned, we just reached a big milestone with the pilot program, and so thought it was a good time to come to you with a few key updates. The three main things we want to cover tonight, one, give you a brief project history and background, just kind of set the stage and, and give some key background info there. Two, we'll go through a pilot update, obviously give you some of our exciting data that we've collected over the course of the pilot and, and some of our next steps and future work after that. So we'll dive right into our project history and background. And as many of you, I'm sure, are aware, there have been multiple studies and reports done over this concept of potable reuse over the last 10-plus years, going back to the Strategic Water Supply Plan, 2012 study done for CMCD, a series of Garver reports that were done over the last seven to eight years, have all built a body of data around this concept of reclaiming wastewater from our water reclamation facility, treating that to a very high standard, and augmenting Lake Thunderbird with that, and providing some drought resiliency and overall water security to our water portfolio. So this pilot was another key milestone in that, in that effort. And so just to give you a kind of a sense of where we're at regulate, from a regulatory perspective, like Chris mentioned, we're in close coordination with DEQ. They are the permitting entity as it relates to reuse. And so we are going through a six-step process with any reuse project with DEQ. And so those steps are shown on the screen here, and we are right in between steps two and three here with the completion of the pilot. So we completed an IPR feasibility study several years ago, that was approved by DEQ. We submitted and got a pilot protocol approved. We then ran the pilot, and then like Chris mentioned, we just received a letter of support this week from DEQ after their review of the pilot. So moving forward, if we were to continue pursuing reuse, you see the four next steps that would be ahead of us here, completing a wasteload allocation study for Lake Thunderbird, and that results in something called a TMDL, or Total Maximum Daily Load. And so that is just a, a modeling effort that establishes what the lake can receive as far as loadings of various constituents that would be present, essentially. Step four, we would complete an engineering report with that TMDL in hand, that would essentially set our design criteria in addition to what we already have. And then beyond that, we would go to the CMCD board and develop consensus with, with their board and the member cities that also use Lake, Lake Thunderbird. And then finally, after all of that, we can submit plans and specs and achieve approval from the OWRB and the DEQ to, to go build that, that facility. So a lot of work yet to come before we're close to shovel-ready, but again, important milestone reached here as we, you know, get past milestone two here. All right, so we'll dive into the pilot update. I'm sorry, I do have a few graphs for you tonight. I've tried to keep it as high-level as possible. We're summarizing a two-to-three-hundred-page report here, so certainly not going to be death by PowerPoint tonight, but trying to get you a few of the, a few of the high points here. So the goal of our pilot was to identify a treatment approach that does not produce a brine stream and can reliably provide potable reuse quality product water. And what we mean by a brine stream is, in other parts of the country where reuse is being done, a lot of that is being done with reverse osmosis or high-pressure membranes. Those are great treatment technologies that have been in the marketplace for a long time. The problem that comes with those is they develop a high-brine reject. And so that reject stream is very costly to deal with when we're not located next to an ocean where we can just discharge it into the ocean, like someone like Los Angeles would do. We don't have that, that option, so we set out to pilot a treatment technology, or a treatment stream, rather, that would not produce that high-brine reject. And so first goal here, demonstrate the efficacy of BNR and tertiary treatment that I'll tell you about later, to achieve safe drinking water standards. That's, that's a key component of any reuse project, we are treating to drinking water standards before it would ever reach Lake Thunderbird. Second, again, removal, removal of pathogens and personal care and pharmaceutical products without the use of those high-pressure membranes I mentioned. So there's a whole host of constituents that aren't currently regulated by the DEQ, but we're still monitoring because we see them in our wastewater effluence, we see those across the nation, so we know it's going to be prudent to test for those constituents. And so to give you a sense of the scale of the pilot, the pilot train encompassed two existing aeration basins, a secondary clarifier, and more at the Norman Water Reclamation Facility. And so a lot of the times when we think of a pilot, we think of a little benchtop or laboratory, laboratory-scale pilot. That's really not what we did here. The, the city took great efforts to plan and put in really full-scale demonstration infrastructure here. So really robust pilot infrastructure that we piloted for almost 15 months. So caught the seasonality throughout the year, hot temperatures, cold temperatures, all those different conditions that was key to, to get DEQ's buy-in on that. And again, just to kind of set the stage on the technologies we're talking about, anytime you talk about reuse, you're, we're going to use multiple barriers in that treatment scheme, just like a bridge engineer, factors in factor of safety on the load for that bridge, we build in redundancy to those treatment processes. So if one process is stressed or strained, we have other processes and other barriers in the process to help catch and remove those constituents of concern. So a couple key processes that we piloted, one, biological nutrient removal. These are processes that would focus on things like nitrogen and phosphorus, which are very impactful, if they were to go to Lake Thunderbird, they could produce things like algal blooms and the like. So very important process there. Tertiary filtration, we get additional solids removal, turbidity removal, and polishing of those nutrients as well. And so we actually tested two separate process trains through these two processes to build more data across a couple of different technologies that we're treating for the same parameters, but giving us some data on cost-effectiveness and different operational parameters that we could potentially implement at full scale. I'll, I'll try to be limited with the acronyms, but a few things you'll see over, over the presentation is MUCT, which is Modified University of Cape Town Process. That's just a description of a BNR process. And then AGS, Aerobic Granular Sludge. Those two processes are, are doing the exact same job, they're just called a little different and, and set up a little different in the field and in the design of those, of those processes. So again, you see, as we go through that first barrier, BOD, nitrogen, phosphorus, those things are what we're targeting the most. Next, tertiary filtration, we piloted a deep sand filter and a cloth media Next, tertiary filtration, we piloted a deep sand filter and a cloth media disc filter. Again, two different technologies targeting the same constituents, just a little different operating parameters and design criteria. Again, we get that turbidity removal and the polishing of those nutrients as we go through that process.
Cole, do we have a disposal? Do we have to dispose of either the sand or the cloth media in a different manner because it's now the yucky stuff?
No, sir. All of these would be, when they would be, when those medias would be replaced, they would be eligible for just standard landfill disposal, no hazardous material disposal through any of this. That's a great question. So following those first two steps, the the following third and fourth step are what we typically refer to as advanced treatment. The the first two processes are fairly basic treatment schemes. We really get into the advanced methodologies in these last two steps. So you'll see at the top, step three there, ozone BAF or Biologically Active Filtration. The ozone provides a high oxygen punch, it's just a chemical treatment, additional chemical treatment, and those biologically active filters allow us to treat for things like minerals, trace organics, some of those constituents of emerging concern because of the oxidation state and and the way we operate that, we get a bit of removal there. And then finally, we go into UV AOP at the end, that's ultraviolet disinfection and advanced oxidation processes. So again, further oxidation, more advanced treatment with that UV light and disinfection. We also had hydrogen peroxide addition in that final step to give additional oxidation there. So through those final two steps, we're really going after any remaining pathogens there, any contaminants of emerging concern that's left at that point in the stream. All right, so a few pictures, just want to show you some examples of what we piloted on site. Here we have myself and Derek Leatherman, the the lab manager down at the water reclamation facility pulling samples, running tests. This was a temporary structure we built on site to house our two tertiary filtration pilots. And then here we have a look at the two advanced treatment processes. So that step three and step four we talked about were conducted in these trailers. So the trailer on the left was step three, trail on the right was step four. So these were very specialized, custom-built trailers that are used around the country in various piloting efforts. These were brought on site and and piloted for roughly six to eight months or so. And you can see, this was a snowy day, we had a good time fighting all the cold weather with all our small pipes and freezing over, over the course of the pilot. The the plant staff did an outstanding job. You guys have a great staff, they were really diligent, went above and beyond throughout this entire pilot to to help keep it running. All right, I do want to quickly show you a brief snapshot of some of our data. Again, I don't want to hammer this to death, but we, we did want to highlight the fate of three major contaminant groups that I've already mentioned, which are some of the most impactful to our reuse designs if we were to move forward. One, the nutrients, I mentioned nitrogen and phosphorus, those are incredibly crucial when we talk about augmenting Lake Thunderbird. Pathogens and indicator organisms, these are the things that can cause sickness if they were to make it into contact with public. These are already things that you're doing as far as disinfection with your existing facility, we would just do it at a much higher level in a reuse scenario. And then finally, that last bullet, or the last section titled organics, again, those are, those contaminants of emerging concern, trace organics, some of the more obscure contaminants that that we're going to talk about.
Real quick, source of nitrogen and phosphorus, that's fertilizers in yards, right?
So that can contribute, but largely, and those are present in wastewater today, just through the natural waste that get put down the drain. The sewer system is separate from what fertilizers would run off the yard into the storm drain. So this is just the nitrogen and phosphorus that's present going down, you know, domestic and commercial drains.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. And then we've talked a lot about PFOS in here.
That's right, I've got some data on PFOS.
Thank you.
It's the big one, everybody wants to hear about that. And it's important to note, nitrogen and phosphorus, your, your current reclamation facility, it does not have limits for nitrate and total phosphorus, some of the things we're going to be talking about. So the existing work does remove ammonia, which is a nitrogen species, but these are nitrogen and phosphorus compounds that are beyond what you're required to treat for today, just to make that distinction.
And that requirement comes in our discharge permit or operating permit through DEQ?
It would be, it's not present in your permit today, but it would be with the reuse permit.
Lake, Lake Thunderbird is impaired right now for the chlorophyll A, so it's already probably getting too much phosphorus and nitrogen from yard runoff. So they're probably going to look at us and say, we don't want you adding more from your wastewater plant. So that's why we're really going to have to target low numbers.
Thank you.
All right, so let's dive into nutrients. All right, so overall, I'm going to show you a couple different species here, but we were really encouraged with our nitrogen removal. We saw upwards of 99.9% removal in most of our dataset. And so I'll orient you to the graph on the left, and both of these graphs really tell the same story. So on the vertical axis here, we have the log of the concentration of what we're showing here, total kydal nitrogen or TKN. All that means is it's a log scale of that value. We present it in that way so it's easier to view, essentially. And so when we say we have a two-log removal, that means we got 99% removal. If we got three-log removal, that's 99.9% removal. So just a little different way to show this. And so as we went through, in this case, the AGS effluent, the AGS effluent, and then our tertiary effluent, you can see we were coming in up here at the three and a half to four range, we left with an average of below one. So that's where we get the three-log or 99.9% removal of that particular nitrogen species. And we saw a very similar thing for the graph on the right, which is total nitrogen, just a little different way to quantify the different nitrogen species we have in the process flow. Similar for phosphorus, both of our pilot trains maintained very low, very encouraging effluent phosphorus. And actually, we like to show this graph, warts and all, because towards the end of the pilot, we were getting ready to demobilize, and we had some very nasty storms that caused all kinds of electrical issues, and we got to see that reaction. So it ended up being a stressful time, but it gave us useful pilot data in that we went through a failure test, we got to see exactly what equipment was the most prudent to keeping that system operating well. But again, I'll orient you to the graph on the left, we're coming in with the vertical axis, total phosphorus. We were coming into that train around seven milligrams per liter or so, and you can see the blue line, which is what was leaving that train, is down below less than one. And so our target for our phosphorus leaving the pilot, based on the DEQ regs, was about 0.2 milligrams per liter. And we were very encouraged with, with the systems we had in place, the chemical removal, filtration, in addition to that, we were able to meet those targets and have some very encouraging data for what the full-scale system might look like. All right, so that's nutrients, let's dive into pathogens and indicator organisms. And so this is switching gears to the disinfection of the system. So we, we treat the water to a very high level as far as solids and nutrients and BOD, but we still may have some pathogens present in that water. So that's where things like ozone, UV disinfection come in and inactivate all of those pathogens. And so again, a big fancy graph that I'll orient you to here, and how we're presenting the pathogens here is count per volume, so however many organisms we can count in a liter of sample, for example. And all the different colors represent a different organism that we may be required to track and or monitor in a discharge permit. So things like E. coli, F+ colifage, Giardia, Salmonella, things of that, of that nature. And so what we have along the horizontal axis is stepping through our treatment train. And so what we want to see on this graph is a downward slope as we go through that treatment train. And so that's what we found. You can see, as we were coming into some of the upfront trains, we were seeing E. coli up around the 10,000 count per volume in that range. By the end, you can see there on the very far right, hopefully the doors are blocking that, we're down below one. One organism per, you know, liter of sample, for example. So really strong disinfection demonstrated in the pilot, and DEQ was very excited about, about this dataset, really, really strong disinfection data here. All right, and then the fun one, organics, and here's our PFAS slide. So you'll, you'll have to think back, when we started this in 2021, when we actually started up the pilot, there was not a PFAS regulation like there is today. So we knew the EPA was coming out with that, but we did not know where, where they were going to land. So we started gathering data just to gather the data, even though we didn't exactly have firm guidance from DEQ at that time. Well, so now we have that, and we've been able to add some, some benchmarks from those recent announcements. So the graph on the left is what was essentially coming into our pilot. And so what we documented were the number of samples that were above certain concentrations. And it's important to point out, we're talking about nanograms per liter, that's part per trillion. So to give you some scale, a part per trillion is similar to one drop of water in an Olympic-sized pool full of water. That's kind of the, that's the visualization of a part per trillion. So you can see, coming into our pilot, we had several samples that were at five to, call it six and a half nanograms per liter. That is just above the max contaminant level or the, the regulated level that DEQ is set for. So this would be the MCL in a drinking water scenario. The max recordable level, so the lowest we can even record this stuff down to is about one and a half, two nanograms per liter. So we show you that just to show you, we're down at the very extent and limit of even the analytical capability of most of these labs that are present today. So that's coming into our pilot. Leaving our pilot, you can see we have the same graph, sample count, and all of our samples were below the max recordable limit of that roughly two nanograms per liter. So what this informs of is if PFAS makes it into that reuse permit someday, we have data supporting that activated, our activated carbon filtration beds can, can target those, those contaminants. All right, and then this slide captures a lot of information for all the rest. With micropollutants or contaminants of emerging concern, there's a lot of different compounds that might be of interest. So for these unregulated, we'll call them micropollutants, what we want to see is, is constant degradation. This is really what, what we hope to see in our pilot, and we're really encouraged by this data. So the graph on the left is in parts per billion, zero to 60 on the vertical axis there. And that purple bar, the reason we separated it out is it is representing sucralose. So if anybody has Coke Zero or maybe in, in your energy drink there, anyway. If anybody is drinking diet sodas or anything like that, it's, it's one of the artificial sweeteners that you may see in those drinks. Sucralose is a very tough compound to treat for the same reason that it's a good artificial sweetener. Our bodies ingest it, we can taste it, but we do not absorb it, it produces no caloric effect on us. And so that's why it makes it through into the sewer system because our bodies don't, don't biologically interact with that. So we were very interested in sucralose. If you, if you review the literature and all the white papers on CEC, sucralose is always a toughie to treat. And so we were, we were focused on that. And you can see, as we stepped through the, the treatment train, we started up above 60 on average parts per billion, and by the end of it, we're down, you know, one or less parts per billion. So again, getting in that part per trillion range now. The graph on the right shows a similar set of data just for all the other compounds that were much lower in concentration, you wouldn't be able to see them with a larger scale. So that is the same graph, just zoomed into 1.2 part per billion at the max level. And so you can see things like asulfam K, another artificial sweetener, there's the diclofenic acid, I'm still not good at pronouncing these, some of those shades of green, those are arthritis medications, the topical cream you can put on your skin, that's what those compounds come from, prednisone, triclosan, a few others that you may recognize. But you can see a similar trend here where we're coming into our pilot at much higher concentrations than when we're leaving. So very, very encouraging there. And then sometimes I wonder if I should just lead with this slide, but a picture always speaks a thousand words. And so we always like to show what the stream looks like coming into our pilot and what it looked like leaving the pilot. At that point, it's indistinguishable from, from drinking water. And you might ask, were we brave enough to drink it? And yes, we absolutely were. I stand before you without a third eye or a third ear. And I, yeah, I believe some of the council had an opportunity as well. We, we did get to test-taste the reused water, and it was, it was high-grade H2O.
So Cole, I'm assuming what you're saying is diet soda actually makes our wastewater taste better. Is anybody else in the state of Oklahoma doing what we're doing in Norman, Oklahoma?
No, sir. So right now, the city of Bartlesville, north of Tulsa, they are looking at potable reuse, but they have a little different scenario. They, they have an easier task in front of them because their surface water intake is on a river. So if they're discharging into that river, whatever doesn't get withdrawn by their water treatment plant just goes down the stream, just like every other wastewater discharge in the state. They are not augmenting a lake like we are where there's the chance for, one, other cities to use it, and the accumulation of, of that, that augmentation, so.
They just, they had a intake in the river and a discharge, and they just flipped it and put their discharge up above their intake, that's what they're proposing. Kind of cool.
It, it's safe to say, the indications are they will not be held to as high of standards as Norman might be because of the Lake Thunderbird impairments and things of that nature.
Yeah. One of the things we do have is a TDS buildup, and so it's one of the things DE, DEQ has commented on, they want to know if the lake will accumulate a salt buildup over time. But the literature looks good on that also.
Yeah, so our TDS values, we, total dissolved solids, it's just a measure of salts and minerals. The drinking water standard is 500 milligrams per liter, and that's really just an aesthetic component. If you get above 500, you can taste it and customers start to notice. All of our samples were below that 500 level, so very excited about that as well.
Cole, that's measured in electrical conductivity?
It, it can be, the 500 number is milligrams per liter, yeah, but it can be measured in conductivity as well. So obviously, I hinted at this, but much more work to come. The first bullet is no longer factually correct, DEQ has finished their review and issued their letter of support, so we're very excited about that. The middle bullet there, we do have another project ongoing right now. We were able to snag a grant from the Bureau of Reclamation to fund a predictive lake optimization tool project, and all that means is we are working with some data analysts and AI modeling experts to potentially develop a scenario where we can watch the forecast of precipitation out releases from the lake and build a model of the lake essentially and inform us how much we would be able to augment to get the highest return on our investment. So essentially, help size the pump station and some of the automation associated with that.
So what happens if we make too much reused water? Then it goes in the creek?
That's a great question. If that lake is full and they're releasing water over the dam, there's no need to spend all the money making the reused water, you would just continue doing what you're doing today and discharge to the Canadian.
We'll have a side stream setting aside, and so if we need it, turn that on, start pumping that high-quality water to the lake. But then if, if it's raining, we have plenty of water around, turn that off and just do what we're doing today.
And that's really what the plot tool we hope will tell us is, how much water do we need to pump to get the highest return on our investment? Keep that lake at the healthiest levels, essentially, at the end of the day. And then Chris mentioned the National Water Research Institute Advisory Panel, we're working with them right now, they're going to provide a third-party review of the pilot as well to give their input. And they are also going to speak to, if Norman were to look at direct potable reuse, instead of going into Lake Thunderbird, go straight to the water plant, what would they recommend as best practices and, and tweaks to the, the process stream to make that happen as well? That's all I've got for you. I, I want to end with a thank you. We had a lot of partners on this project from both the funding and the technical side, but also the, the city staff were just outstanding to work with. They really, again, went above and beyond to helping this effort. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Chris, how is the ongoing conversations, I guess, going with Midwest City and Dell City about this? I know that they've been hesitant, but also like willing to talk and kind of hear what the process is going to be.
So they don't need the water as bad as us, it's kind of where they're coming from, and we're, we know we do need water. And so they were probably, probably two years ago, I'd say they were a heck no, right? And now they've realized that with the droughts that are in our recent past, that the lake will not be there for all three of us, and it could affect them. And so last October, we presented to them, and we're keeping them as a partner, they're, James is in the back of the room there, he was on our oversight board. But we had three Midwest City, two Dell City, three Norman, we had them on a board watching this pilot and invited them for tours, giving them information because we want them, we want them to look over our shoulders and see if they want to be partners on this, because it's a good thing, we're not going to force it on them. So I think after our October meeting, we had really good response from the Dell City group, just saying, hey, they want to hear more because this is interesting, and they now realize the lake will need it from time to time. And so they're kind of becoming on board, what I'd say, but they're not, they don't want to be forced, they're, they want us to be presented to them, and then they'll decide later, is what I would say.
Yeah, I've, I've heard more and more just other communities, not even just in Oklahoma, but across the world really are starting to get hip to this because there are so many issues with us retaining water and with, you know, population size and just like the growth. And I've, I've heard different, different things about, I think it was... And I've heard different, different things about, I think it was, trying to think if it was somewhere in the Northeast that they're talking about treating, crap, what was it? I heard it on NPR the other day, and I was like, oh, this is really interesting, so it's kind of timely to have this update, but something with their, like, septic systems and things to be able to, like, clean that. And I think it was specifically to urine, and be able to kind of like refilter and kind of get that back into their water supply, because they're like having large troubles with.
Yeah, it was P cycling.
Yes.
Being funny, and it was, that's what the article was.
So it's really interesting to see, like, the different ways that communities are trying to address this issue. But I think this is all really exciting. I don't know that it could have gone any better, really, based on the data that you've got.
We're very excited, very, very happy.
Further questions? Yes, sir.
So I remember in 2012, when we did the Strategic Water Supply Committee and Plan, this was our recommendation for how to supply Norman with water over the next 50 years. And we talked in that committee about how Lake Thunderbird was built as a 100-year lake if nothing was done to it. And 100 years would be in 2060-ish, so that it had to be augmented in some way in order for it to continue on past that lifespan. And this seemed like the most logical way, because even back in 2012, we were talking about 11 million gallons of treated wastewater going into the river every day, and Norman's grown significantly since 2012, so I assume there's probably a little bit more, and potentially more in the future as our population grows.
That capacity for 17 million a day at the plant.
We're still at about 11, even though we've grown, because I think there is some
Conservation measures.
Well, that, and then, yeah, and then probably a little tightening up of the pipes, just doing some of our pipe bursting and stuff, trying to eliminate I and I.
Well, I'm excited to see us get this far, a decade, you know, hadn't started this conversation more than a decade ago. And, I mean, as usual, Norman will be the reason why this happens in the state of Oklahoma. What we've done over the last decade, and this pilot, you know, is paving the way for others. I remember when Dell City and Midwest City were, didn't even really want to talk about it, it was like, we don't need it, and it sounds weird, so, you know, but I think they, it's encouraging to hear that they are kind of saying, yeah, the Lake Thunderbird has issues now that we're dealing with. How reliable is it in the decades ahead if we don't do something to augment it in some way? And so it's exciting to hear them getting more on board, and I expect other cities will too.
Yeah.
And even just, you know, I've always thought too, like, you know, all water is reused, every, Lake Thunderbird is refilled by a stream that collects water from all over. And, you know, cities and communities are dumping their effluent into rivers and streams everywhere, and then the next town down the road is pulling it out and trying to treat it and drinking it. So it's like, it's already, we already are consuming reused water, and it makes sense to, you know, when we have that much that we're just basically throwing away every day into the river. One, wanting to be good stewards of what we're putting into the river for the downstream communities, but then, yeah, being able to pull some of that out and supply our own needs by reusing it, it just makes a lot of sense, and I'm fully on board with continuing to pursue, pursue this.
I want to say one thing, because the 100-year life cycle of the lake, sometimes I've had others get it confused, and I think that number is designated as, they said, Norman can have this much, Midwest City can have this much, Dell City can have this much, and then we're going to figure that there's going to be a silt in happen, and so we're going to set aside this much, and it'll probably silt in in about 100 years. And then after the 100th year, if they're right on the prediction, then it will start getting into one of our, in our allocation, you know? So that's what that 100 means. And Kyle, that's managing of our lake, the latest bathometric studies, where they fly over and see how much sediment is in, it's on track. It's actually slightly less than they had predicted, so we might go 100 and a little more than that years. So we're doing good, which is surprising, because you see all the red mud come in on big rainstorms, but it's hanging in there.
And there's ways to deal with that, but they're expensive as well.
Right, yeah.
Dredge it.
Dredging is expensive, but maybe one day it'll be the right thing to do, or I think, I actually was talking with Kyle, and he might just put a project on the shelf, and if we have a drought like we did, you guys remember when we could walk across right there at the Alameda Bridge, just north of that, that was all dirt? So he was, we were thinking, what if you had your plan on the shelf ready, and you could bid it, and then track hose and dozers could get out there, not a dredging operation, but actually physical equipment, just have to have a place to take it and hauling would be the big expense, but you could get in there and get it and try to clear out some of the silt. And that's kind of a natural catch basin for all the silt coming out of the little river. It's kind of doing a, it's a treatment device on accident when they built that bridge. It slows it down, it settles it out in that cove.
It was like a high-value soil.
I was going to say the same thing. Nutrient-rich.
The span of like five years, though, it went from, 2012, it was down where you could see all of it.
We walked out on it.
And then a few years later, the water was overflowing over the bridges, because it would rain so much. But yeah, that's a good distinction, I appreciate that, you know, if it wasn't. Because we talked about a bunch of different scenarios in that committee about building a bigger dam and making the lake bigger, building another lake in Norman on the west side by building a dam on the Canadian River, partnering with Ada to build a new lake down there, partnering with Oklahoma City on a big pipeline to Sardis Lake. That was just the three main ones I remember, and we kind of decided that reuse was the most logical one, because, yeah, building a new lake or flooding a whole flood plain on the west side, building a new dam, or making Lake Thunderbird bigger, how much of a feat that would be, and then partnering with another city 50 miles away to build a lake there and building a pipeline from it all the way to Norman, or partnering with OKC on a massive pipeline to southeast Oklahoma, 100 miles away. And then our ability to commit to something like that with having to vote on rates and that stuff. So this was the most sensible, I'm glad we've made it this far. Appreciate all your work, helping us do it too.
Yeah, I just was curious about that plot study, because you said, like, discharge could go out into the Canadian. Also, what are the extra steps to make it potable reuse instead of the indirect part, like?
Yeah, so the indirect, an indirect potable reuse means you're using an environmental buffer, like a lake, to discharge into before you withdraw to your water treatment plant. If we were to go direct potable reuse, we would be taking a pipe from this advanced treatment facility directly to your drinking water plant out on East Robinson. So what changes is a bit more man-made storage for what we call off-spec water. If you were to have some sort of equipment failure, you would need some sort of monitoring system and storage to handle that off-spec water before it reached the water treatment plant. So essentially, just more man-made infrastructure. Since we don't have an environmental buffer to use, we've got to engineer buffers with man-made infrastructure, essentially.
Is it like, would you put a price tag on that? I know in today's dollars, that's not going to mean anything in 10 years, but considering the pace of how far we've come since this conversation started, but.
We will be doing that.
Yeah, we will be doing, as part of this master planning process we're going through now, we will be putting some dollars to that. So yeah, absolutely.
I kind of like the idea of it going to the water treatment plant. Also, I was a council member that tried the water. It tasted better than the tap water. But that said, I think whenever we were doing that, somebody was telling us that they actually, it was Las Vegas, I think, has a brewery that uses potable reuse.
Yeah, Colorado has a few now, too.
Yeah.
There are indoor grow facilities that use that water, because it's very easy to manage minerals and nutrients in it that way, much tougher to get that balance you like right out of the ground.
Start at zero and work up.
Yeah, just add exactly what you want and stop.
Operationally, though, I have to say, I would be more nervous, because it goes straight to town versus, we're working with the Bureau of Reclamation also, of maybe making a wetlands structure before the lake and get another barrier, just have additional, because the sun is UV, that he had a trailer with UV, the sun does UV, and they're doing a study right now and removing some of the pharmaceuticals just with sun setting in those little tubs out there. So it's just like, for me, safer, and if one of my people mess up and make a boo-boo, it's not like I'm in the paper the next day. It would, you know, it slowly, nature would be backing me up, right? And another good piece is like, currently, that's what we're doing. We're putting in the Canadian River with not this much treatment, a lot less, and it's going down the river, the sun's beating it up and breaking it down. By the time it gets to Lake Uofal, the city of Uofal is drinking it, right?
And what the saying is, the solution to pollution is dilution. And so that's one of the, one of the goals of an environmental buffer is, those parts per trillions that we may have left of some, you know, obscure chemical, it's going to be diluted, mixed, treated, degraded, while it spends weeks, months, years in Thunderbird.
There's more P in the runoff than into this process, isn't there?
Say again?
There's more P in the runoff from storms than there is in the water that comes out of this.
The pounds of phosphorus that are coming from stormwater runoff is much, much higher than what we're putting in.
It's naturally occurring in the soil, and actually, the Highway 9 project, Michelle will testify to this, when ODOT was doing a lot of the dirt work and put some of the new sod, trying to keep runoff from going in, they had really high phosphorus numbers coming into that leg of the lake, like, off-the-charts high. And so that's usually, that's one thing we looked at, is like, so we're going to spend a lot of money trying to get our effluent down, but we're only a small portion of what will be going in the lake. So it might be an idea for us to take some of our money and go put it into stormwater and slow down all these neighborhoods, put in treatment out there, because we can maybe get more bang for our buck, you know, on wetlands out there, and reduce it for the lake, get the lake healthy, and then we don't have to go as low with these devices, what we're going to put in from our treatment device. So we're kind of weighing all that in holistically on the whole watershed.
Yeah, stress is stress, no matter where it comes from.
Yeah, right.
It's just employment guarantee for Michelle Outback.
I'll vouch for that.
We are adjourned, thank you.